Well, hello and welcome back, everybody. We already called roll this morning, so we'll go ahead and move right into request for approval of the minutes. And just so folks are aware of the sequence of events, we're going to do our noon business, the noon council meeting first. And so there are two items under special business ARPA funding. That's the recovery funding investments that we're proposing to make. And then findings for interfaith. We'll wrap up the council meeting and then move right back into our budget workshop where Chief Lee will continue with his presentation.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the city council minutes from the work session and regular evening meeting of May 17th, 2022.
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I won't be voting on this because I was not here.
Thank you. We have a motion and second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Willits.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And Madam Mayor, before we go to the consent agenda, I request that Resolution 28722 be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled for a future meeting as staff is still awaiting additional documents.
Was that a motion?
Unanimous consent request.
Oh, without objection?
All right, thank you. And with that, we'll hear the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. We have a motion and second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Willits.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Now we'll move on to ordinances on first reading.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to make two different unanimous consents because we are doing something different with the first one. I ask unanimous consent that ordinance 2722 be read by number and title only and move to an accelerated second and third reading calendar on June 7th.
Without objection. Right, clerk?
Or D-27-22, an ordinance amending the solid waste franchise agreement, franchise agreement by and between the city of Boise City and by and through its public works department, the city, and allied waste services of North America LLC, doing business as Republic Services of Boise, Republic Services, adopting updated exclusions, adopting and update to collection and ownership of recyclable materials and adopting an updated dispersment rate schedule to increase disperse reimbursement, excuse me, reimbursement rate schedule to increase reimbursement rates paid to Republic Services for solid waste collection disposal services, providing for a waiver of the reading rules, providing an effective date and approving a summary of the ordinance.
And Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that ordinance 2822 be read by number and title and filed for the second reading calendar.
Without objection.
Or D-28-22, an ordinance CAR 21-00038 for property located at 8373 West Victory Road, admitting zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property particularly described in section one of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from A-1 to R-3DDA, setting forth a recent statement in support of such zone change and providing an effective date. Thank you. And now we'll move on to special business. The first is a discussion about the allocation of ARPA funding. That's the federal recovery dollars. I'm really excited to have Chloe here to talk with us about this and to hear, to share with us the proposals from staff for these investments. You know, this is an exciting time. It's an opportunity for all of us to make investments in our community to not only address the needs of today, but really shore up and prepare for the needs of the future for our city. As we've all recognized, the pandemic hasn't been, the pandemic and actually the recovery haven't been the same for everyone in our community. And so based on guidance from council early on, we wanted to look at how we make investments direct in our community in partnership with other organizations to address that, the impact that the pandemic has had on businesses and individuals in our community, but at the same time to make some really impactful generational long-term investments. And so with this recovery funding and from what we hear from Chloe, you know, as a city, we'll be able to move along and advance our goals of creating affordable housing for our residents, of addressing the need to find and afford childcare in our community and take the bold climate action steps that residents have made clear is important, whether it be from passing the bond or general conversations that we've had for years about leading here and building an economy at the same time. And then, of course, I'm seeking wherever we can to support small businesses in our community because they're the lifeblood of it. To address food security came out of many of the sessions as well as being important. And of course, to expand access to mental health care. And these proposals came from the sessions, the listening sessions that many of you attended at the end of, what are we in? At the end of 2021, as well as fairly extensive community feedback that we saw online and through other channels. And it was with that feedback that was shared with us that then staff worked with community partners to put together the proposals that we'll hear today. So thanks, Chloe, for being here. I want to say thanks to, of course, all the department heads that are here in the room, but also to the community partners that helped establish these proposals and the many, many Boisians that came together at listening sessions and online to share with us the impacts that they had experienced, the needs that they believe that they and their communities had, but importantly, the vision they had for our community and what we can do with these investments. And we'll talk about them now. No, I really can't. I mean, I can hear you, but I don't know if people.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Boise City Council. I am here today to provide you with an overview of the work that has taken place in the past many months to identify and prioritize the impactful city projects that staff is recommending for funding by the local American Rescue Plan Act dollars that we received as part of the federal government's COVID response effort. My intent is to provide you with an understanding of how the prioritization took place, make recommendations about those funding allocations, and then ultimately receive your approval on those allocations. I also plan to go into some detail about the community projects the mayor just referenced. As you know, the city received $36.9 million in ARPA funds in 2021. We received the first tranche June of last year and are planning to receive the second tranche in June of this year. So just in a few short days. These four boxes outline the general intent for use of these funds. Relatively speaking, ARPA presents fairly flexible opportunities to meet the specific needs of recipient communities. And these include responding to the public health emergency, that is COVID-19, addressing reductions in revenue for government services, making necessary infrastructure investments, and then the provision of appreciation pay for frontline workers. As soon as the city received the funding, staff set about working to identify and prioritize the projects. However, the final treasury guidance on how to specifically utilize these funds and the details around that was not released until January of this year. Now that we have those guidelines, they were really instrumental in shaping the recommendations and the projects that we are making. Knowing that as a community, we wanted to spend these dollars thoughtfully and deliberately to maximize the impact in our community and to meet our city goals. The mayor and council provided additional guidance on how to spend these dollars. These guiding principles were developed on mayor and council guidance as well as on the city values and what we had been informally hearing in the community at that time. And these really align with the advancement of strategic priorities around housing, transportation, economic development, and climate action. We wanted to allow for an opportunity to match philanthropic giving that would really increase and leverage reach and impact, provide the ability to pass funds directly to community partners who are directly serving community members, and then create an opportunity to track and measure what that long-term impact will be and look like. Ultimately, the goal is to fund significant and impactful projects that will both serve the community now and in the future, while also freeing up and leveraging other dollars that address other much-needed services and projects. We then spent three months essentially listening to the community. So we conducted listening sessions and hosted an online portal to solicit feedback from what people were seeing in terms of community needs and gaps in services. We received over 300 responses on the portal and over 40 people attended the in-person listening sessions that took place late last year. Staff also met extensively with community partners and nonprofits who are living in these areas and providing services to gain additional insights into what the needs and gaps are. We then took the community feedback, the themes of which are on the slide in front of you. We aligned them with the mayor and council's guidance for spending and then further matched those up with the budget and portfolio priorities of the council to come up with high-level funding recommendations. Here is how this shook out at a high level. Staff is recommending $12 million go to affordable housing. This will go towards existing and future projects to increase affordability and supply, of which Director Keen has outlined a strategy in the recent past. $10 million is being recommended to go towards climate adaptation projects. These will range in terms of clean energy use, water protection, as well as geothermal. And I believe Director Burgess will cover those briefly this afternoon. Staff is also recommending $2 million to go towards the funding of the Connector Parks Phase One project. This is a broadband initiative, part of the larger strategy that includes implementation of Wi-Fi and related infrastructure in three of our downtown parks. And then 2.6 has been set aside and is being recommended for administrative costs pertaining to programmatic support of this project as a whole. This represents about 7% of the total ARPA amount that we have received and will go towards programmatic support. For example, we're working with consultants to ensure eligibility. We are meeting eligibility requirements of ARPA in all of these projects. This amount has been calculated based on the estimated need through the entirety of the program. And then finally, the 10.2 is being recommended, 10.2 million for community projects. And these fall into the realm of childcare, food security, mental health, and small business support. And I will talk more in detail about those on the next slide. And I am speaking more about these on behalf of the mayor's office, as well as Kate Nelson, who worked very closely with community partners to develop these projects. I am the messenger, and I was hoping that Kate would be here to call on for any more detailed questions the council might have. Unfortunately, she is unwell today, so I might need to follow up based on council's questions, which I'm happy to do. Within that full 10.2 million, you will see a breakdown within each area. These projects have been designed based on that community feedback that we heard. Related to childcare, Boisians have made it very clear that the high cost and lack of facilities have made childcare in Boise very difficult to access and low wages for childcare workers and providers is a significant factor in this environment. As such, staff developed an approach that would provide incentive pay to childcare workers and providers who endured the challenging workplace conditions and stayed in the workplace throughout the pandemic. The city will partner with the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children to pass the funds directly to workers and providers who are licensed and eligible to work within the city of Boise. In addition to the incentive pay, the city will continue to implement system-level changes like reducing child city licensing burdens and coordinating administration with the state. Community feedback also exposed a desire to address food insecurity in our city. Based on the range of ideas and needs in the community, this project focuses on developing a comprehensive, sustainable local food system that uses a hub-and-spoke model where a lead agency is identified and then collaborates and coordinates with a group of service providers in the area to achieve a shared goal or vision. So the idea is that the shared goal would ideally include a permanent space for a community food hub, increased means to transport food from local sources around town to neighborhoods, as well as a way to address food waste. Mental health has continued to be a challenge throughout this pandemic, and that is what we heard from our community feedback as well. The goal of this project is to expand access to mental health services by supporting existing service providers and programs that are really targeting underserved and uninsured clients while also growing and sustaining group therapy opportunities. And then finally, the small business support. Most community respondents we heard from strongly support maintaining and preserving small businesses and ensuring that residents who work in Boise are receiving a livable wage for the work they do. In addition, the success of the past small business grant program that was executed by the city, I believe in late 2020, led staff to develop a simple approach of direct payments to very small businesses who are based in qualified census tracts and who survived the pandemic. The city will partner with United Way to distribute the funds to eligible businesses. Thanks, yeah. Thank you. All of these applications and opportunities will be opened late summer or early fall. And we're still, staff is still developing out some of the minutia in executing these.
And Chloe, just a follow-up on that. So as we set these up, as in the past, we'll look, first off, there's partners involved in all of them. Our goal was to not just have our investment be the only investment. So in some ways, we're seeking partnership and additional funds to grow these programs. But then RFPs or the other process would follow next, correct?
Correct. So the mental health and food security will be RFPs that are competitive opportunities for people to learn about and apply for. And then with the small business and childcare, there will be outreach to recipients who will need to provide a little bit of additional information about their eligibility to us.
Madam Mary, just a quick comment. I'm super proud of our city and our internal audits job in getting emergency funds out during the past couple of years. One of the things that I've brought up a couple of times is there were some businesses that submitted requests for funds that were eligible for funds but made a few small technical errors. I'm really excited that we're using United Way to help administer some of these small business grants just because I think that they've got a greater ability and greater experience and be able to help people navigate some of those technical issues. And so my comment or my request is that as we have United Way look at reevaluating how we do this and opening this back up again, that we also kind of look at some of those applicants that maybe were disqualified because of some small technical issues, but were still qualified based off of all the categories to receive funding both then and now as well. So if we can relay that to the United Way, I know that that's a request that we heard a few different times.
Yes, and that's, we have heard that from you and from others, and it's definitely something that's under consideration and United Way is or will be aware of it. But also, I mean, now that we've, we're so distanced from that time, another big piece of consideration will be, are those that were disqualified still in need of resources? Or have they weathered this storm okay? Recognizing, as we've mentioned, that some people came out just fine or better, others didn't, and so that'll be a big piece of this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hallie Burton. We have polled, oh, just really quickly, we have polled a list of potential small businesses that we think would be eligible and are planning to bring in that original list as well, just to sort of predict who we'll be able to reach and how. So we will definitely consider that.
Madam Mayor.
I've got the council president and then you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chloe. This exciting list is comprehensive. I think it really does hit on the themes that we heard from both the community and from the council members. I just want to talk about process. As you know, I always want to talk about process. We'll approve this today. Some of these will come back in other forms through the RFP, through our housing program for final approval of how the funds are actually expended. So I guess I'm just asking, once we approve this today, if we could get a list of, or, you know, a memo, how they'll be spent, which ones will come back to us, which ones? Some of, like the broadband, I think, is already set up. The United Way part is already set up. I'm not quite sure which other ones. That would be helpful for me.
Madam Mayor, Council President Clegg, you have jumped to my next slide, which would be that we do plan to allocate, where we are hoping that the council will approve the allocation today and then will plan on bringing quarterly updates to you as well as major project updates that would be specific or more broadly via memo as they come up.
And some of these, to be clear too, some of these investments, because we have the money on hand and we want to get it out to community quickly, it's through an IBC. And then by doing that, then staff can start the RFP process. And then other parts of the recovery funds that we'll hear from department directors unwoven into their presentations will come as part of the next fiscal year budget conversation because it'll be spent in the next fiscal year.
Madam Mayor.
I just had a question. I think I was next.
Sorry, you were.
Yep, it was a long line. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chloe. Can we go back to that previous slide? So, and you may or may not be able to answer this, but I just want to ask these questions. So the incentive pay for childcare workers, I'm wondering if there's any part of that funding that could be used to provide professional development? Like if folks are looking to increase their knowledge as childcare providers? If we have, if that money can be used for that or if there's a way for us to facilitate those who have stayed in that field that would like to have some professional development? In terms of the food security, speaking from personal experience, when you have not had to deal with food insecurity, it is difficult to access help like that. The easier we make it for people to access that kind of help, the better. So if there's a way for us to make that a little more streamlined, maybe you don't have to go through a lot of bureaucracy to access the support, if we could look into that. In terms of the mental health, if we could ensure that that information is being delivered to our communities who don't speak English and also perhaps do some outreach to those providers who are able to deliver those services in languages other than English, I think would be helpful too. And same for the small business support, if we are able to make sure that, similar to what Councilman Hallie Burton was saying, make sure that those folks who, for whom English is not a first language, who may have been tripped up in that first round of funding, if we can make sure that they have the support they need to make use of those funds if they qualify. Thank you, Chloe.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, thank you. All of these components that you have brought up about each of these projects, I have heard are factors in the conversations that are taking place. And so I'll make sure to deliver that back to the development.
Go ahead. So my question is related to, if you go back a slide, I think, the climate, yeah, climate adaptation. And I know that Director Burgess is going to be covering this a little bit later. One of the things I was really looking forward to with this, with this chunk of investment is potentially looking at ways that we can use that to reduce the bonding burden of our larger water renewal projects. And so I'm sure that Steve is going to cover this, but I just wanted to, like, get it out there so that he could be thinking about it before he presents to us. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council Pro Tem Woodings, thank you. I will definitely be looking to Steve to address that.
Anything further? Chloe, this is your last piece. So now, okay, so if there's nothing further for Chloe or for us, then the action is, I believe that there's an IBC attached?
It is a federal, we're calling it a federal funding allocation document.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the FY 2022 allocation of ARPA funding as presented in the interim budget change dated May 24th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I, I'm really looking forward to a lot of the details that are going to underpin the success of this. But I think that the approach of having those larger buckets where we're able to allow some innovation and some different types of partnerships and really kind of deepening the community's collective response to the pandemic and as we're coming out of that is a really big deal. And I think that the pandemic kind of showed us where our weak spots are. And the intention of this funding is to address where some of those weak spots were found. And I think that this overall financial plan gets into those little weak areas. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that creates a little bit more resiliency and strength going into the future. Thank you.
Madam Mary, I just wanted to quickly commend you and your team for the outreach that you did in trying to explore the different areas that we really needed to address here. I think that while a lot of the areas were exposed, the nuances of it often aren't. So when it comes to really addressing the community that was disproportionately affected, I thought that in this particular circumstance, our city did an especially good job at reaching out to those community members, reaching out to those nonprofits as well to kind of work as liaisons with those community members. And I would just encourage us to kind of continue that practice going forward. And it really is identified in the plan. And thank you, Chloe, for identifying the need to really work with those nonprofit partners who are working with different populations every single day. It can really help plug us into the nuances of these when it comes time for applications and other nuanced parts of the program. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. Councilmember Hallie Burton, I really want to say it was our city staff that did an incredible job of outreach with the community. The Department of Community Engagement organized the listening sessions. They organized the online and feedback tools. And then, and I don't know about those of you that sat in those community listening sessions, but I was struck at how nuanced, in many ways, the needs were. But also how, despite the differing populations and differing neighborhoods that showed up to talk, how similar many of the needs were. So there was both similarity in the sense that so many folks were struggling, needing access to the same things which are addressed in this, but also nuance in how best to do it. And that's how the community partnerships were born. So it was community engagement, it was Chloe and Kate in my office, but also then the back office folks, the legal team that had to help us figure out whether or not and how we could spend these monies effectively for the public and the clerk's office with their grants administration. And there's probably others as well. But, so it really was a team of folks here that made this possible. And then we were lucky enough to get to go and listen and connect with community through the process.
Madam Mayor, just quickly, in addition to what other council members have said, I just wanted to commend the staff on stepping up. This, you know, COVID was a really hard thing and these funds, in response to it, were a huge opportunity. But on one hand, but they were also a really big responsibility. And I think all of you stepped up in a way that is commendable. I think coming out of it, we're seeing that more and more is being expected of city and city staff. And so I'm glad that you were able to step up. I wish I could say it's over. And so I'm glad that you were able to step up. I wish I could say it's over, probably isn't it? It's probably going to be more of this. But with more of it comes more opportunities. So I'm, you know, I, I commend them, I commend your office and look forward to figuring out how to leverage this so that it isn't just the city, but that it really is the community. And I think you've done a good job starting that process.
Madam Mayor. Thank you. I'll just echo, this is a great responsibility. I had something similar about 10 years ago and it was a chore and also a lot of stress because you're dealing with immediate needs, but you're also trying to look long term. And that's a huge responsibility. So thank you to you, thank you to your staff. And there's a lot of things that the federal government does, and sometimes they make sense and sometimes they don't, and the regulations involved are also really cumbersome. So I, I appreciate, I have empathy in this. I agree with the mayor that this is a really once in a lifetime opportunity. We really have some money that has come to us that we didn't expect. My concern in all of this, without going into deep dive, is that we may be making long-term funding commitments with short-term money. And I worry about that. I worry about what that will do to taxpayers long-term, even if all of these ideas are exceptional. I am concerned about what will happen long-term. I know that we're going to get deep dives on this later. And particularly as part of the budget, but it's, it's hard for me to vote yes before seeing that big picture of the budget and then also looking at those things long-term. So wanted you to know where I'm coming from on this. It really is a fiscal lens. I think there's a lot of great ideas, but I'm just worried about long-term, what this might mean for the city.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Chloe. This is very hopeful. I tend to believe that, like the Pro Tem said, I think this, the last few years have revealed areas where we could improve our service to our community members. And I don't think we can go back. I think we have to move forward, recognizing that because the face of the people who were suffering has changed a bit. There are people who have been suffering for a very long time. And that number grew. Like I've shared many times over the last four years, I was one of those people who thought of myself as middle class until the last recession showed me that I was not. Perhaps having an education, a college education makes some of us feel that way. But when you can have a state job and still be hungry and still be struggling, that's not middle class. And so I think this is what we have to do moving forward is we cannot turn away from the needs of our community. We have to embrace that duty and we have to shift our priorities. So I applaud that we have this money and I hope that we will find ways in the future to make sure that it's, that we're not moving backwards, that we continue to serve our community's needs.
Go ahead. Thank you. Councilmember Willetts' comments reminded me of something because I am, if anyone has been watching these IBC meetings for the past five years, I am an absolute hawk on ongoing expenditures and things that are going to create ongoing commitments for city council and for the city. As I was reviewing this, I was seeing capital improvements. I was seeing things that improve capacity so that other community partners can take on this work. And so that's what I was really looking for was a budget for the ARPA funds that's not creating ongoing commitments for the city, but is creating, putting one-time money into one-time uses so that we're not encumbering future taxpayers. And I think a hundred percent that's what this is. And I think that when Steve presents, we're going to see how we're even saving our taxpayers a little bit more by allocating these resources. So I think it's actually really exciting.
And then, Madam Mayor, Council Pro Tem Woodings, to echo that, that is both a directive from the council, but also a fundamental sort of eligibility requirement of the ARPA dollars, that these are one-time capital improvement must be spent, encumbered and spent by specific dates in the fairly new future. And so that was really kind of like a hat that we wore as we were thinking about these projects.
And I'll say too, just on that, the, this is, it's an exciting opportunity, as the council president Pro Tem said too, and Chloe has also mentioned, these are one-time funds. And we were intentional in the way these were, the allocations were determined and the programs were proposed. Some governments around the country really struggled during COVID. This council and this team of people were really smart from the earliest days of setting us up conservatively, setting aside funds as we needed them, recognizing that we could potentially have impacts to our revenue and to the services that we provided. And from the earliest days of COVID, we're taking steps that actually made it possible for us to be where we are today, which is in a place where instead of keeping all of these funds internal, like some governments even in this region have decided to do, we sought out to figure out how we could serve our community with one-time funds to meet the needs existing today. With the idea that it's really, you're, you're kind of planting the seed so that more grows. And so partnerships with United Way, Idaho Association of Education Young Children, those involved in food security, other elements of these community funds that will go direct to the community for one-time needs. It is our expectation, as the council president has said as well, that they grow. We'd like to see other agencies come to the table with us and help us address those experiencing homelessness and their needs for forever homes. We'd like to see private philanthropy and others with means to do the same thing. And so it's both been our call to the community to help us understand the needs that exist here so that we could in a smart way allocate these funds, but also a call to community partners to help us expand the impact and capacity of this once in a lifetime investment that we can make. And so it's really been an incredible opportunity as well as responsibility to develop this program of funding with an eye to immediate needs, but also the ability for us to look back 10, 15, 20 years from now and know that we helped at this moment in time make investments that are helping our kids and grandkids with the, the needs of the community at that point.
Madam Mayor, just one clarification though. The part, big part of the reason that we're in this situation is that Madam Mayor's first budget had a COVID contingency in it. The first direction from her office in the first year that she put that together was look and plan for and think hard about this disastrous event. So she thanked the department head, she thanked the council, but it all happened because of Madam Mayor's leadership and she's not great at complimenting herself. So we should all do it when we can.
How about just not from here? But thank you. All right. With that, I think Clerk, will you call the roll?
Willetts.
No.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Five in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, we will move to the second item of special business. And this is the reason for decision and revised conditions of approval. So the findings document related to CUP 2126. And Josh, go ahead and start and then we'll see if council has any questions or things they want to weigh in. Then I've got a couple of things to say.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. On April 25th, 2022, council upheld the appeal of CUP 2126 by Interface Sanctuary with direction to staff to return with revised findings and a reasoned statement and conditions of approval. We have distributed the memo to council that has the appeal findings, the reasoned statement and the revised conditions of approval for adoption today. We are recommending two very slight changes to the reasoned statement. In two places where the word home is used, we would recommend inserting shelter to, to reference that as a shelter home. So in the first paragraph and the fourth paragraph of the reasoned statement, we would recommend that change. With that, if council is in agreement, we would recommend adoption of the findings and conditions of approval today. And I will stand for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Josh?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Not, not a question, but thank you for taking what was a very long and convoluted record and producing what I thought was a very clear document that got to the heart of what we found that night and included in the correct language, all of the things that we wanted to add as conditions. I appreciate the addition of shelter to the word home in those first and fourth paragraphs of the reasoned statement. I think it will make the document more consistent overall as we use shelter in, in many other places. And it wasn't quite clear that that was referring to the same thing. So I appreciate those changes.
All right. I think that's it, Josh. I'll just say, just so council and the public are aware, the hearings that we had, I think we said that night were unprecedented in the amount of time spent reviewing the record, the amount of time spent asking questions and getting to the crux of what Planning and Zoning Commission said we needed to get to. And I just want to make it clear from our perspective as a city and as an administrator, from that moment forward, we've worked with our team here to ensure that as this process moves forward, the shelter home moves forward, that our city is ready to deliver on the expectations set forth in these conditions. We know that and each of our department heads that was part of that hearing is here with us tonight. And we've gathered since that meeting to begin discussing how we provide service to those that need it, that will be new residents in the neighborhood, but and at the same time, I'm sure that the conditions that you created to work with the neighborhood are implemented.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I look forward to that. With that, I would move approval of CUP 21-26, Reason for Decision and Revised Conditions of Approval. As presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there discussion?
Madam Mayor. I just want to note that I took copious notes throughout the hearing, including all of the conditions and everything is discussed. I've examined these conditions and this reason for decision against those notes and find them to be very consistent and much better worded than anything that I wrote down that night. But very much getting at the intent of council in our, in our condition. So I want to thank staff for that.
Madam Mayor. I just want to note that we've got the dates that are on here. It doesn't necessarily describe the hours, the lift, the work that every single person, staff, council members, planning and zoning put into it. It's probably the only thing that it doesn't truly copy is how much work went in there, but the background is, is correct or the attachments are correct, the appeal findings are correct, the reasoned statement is correct, the conditions of approval are all basically what we put together that. So with that huge record, I do think that this, you know, succinctly describes the reasoned statement there. So certainly going to be in support of this. I do appreciate the change of the word home to shelter because it's not a home. And that really is our end goal here, making sure that we are putting people in permanent housing solutions and that this is really a step to get them there. So that really is a very small change as far as the words go, but it's a very important one. Because I think that that really needs to describe our long-term commitment to getting folks into a home.
Madam Mayor. As I noted, I believe that this document does reflect the record as we produced it over the, the hearings those nights. I too took copious notes and reviewed it against those notes and found it to match. I'd like to note that I appreciate Madam Mayor's commitment to ensuring that these conditions are upheld, that they're followed. And I want to make a commitment to the community knowing that this was a very difficult decision, knowing that we'll have two council members who will not vote with us today, understanding exactly why that is. Because this wasn't an easy decision and there are many sides to it. That this is designed to ensure that the neighborhood in fact does not suffer undue harm, undue burden from this decision. And that will depend on ensuring that these conditions are upheld and upheld fully. And I'm glad to hear, not that I doubted it, that the mayor is committed to that, that the staff is committed that. And I know that this council is committed to overseeing that. So this isn't the end, this is the beginning, and I hope what it's the beginning of is better serving those who need the shelter. I think there is an opportunity here that we only get occasionally and, and we have that opportunity right now to do something not just what we can, but something better. And I, I make the commitment to try and see that through.
Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the council president's words highlighting the conditions that are in place. I don't know if my colleagues have received comments from folks with strong emotions about the decision that we made, not unanimously. But that has been what I have shared with folks is there are 29 conditions, I believe, in place that must be met and that we are held accountable to by our community as we should be. But as we've learned over the last couple of years, we have had to push ourselves to meet the needs of everyone in our community, certainly those who are most vulnerable in our community. And I feel that we had to do everything we possibly could to make sure that folks are adequately cared for, certainly having the basic needs of having shelter. So for that reason, I am grateful to staff for all their hard work. I'm grateful to Madam Mayor. This is, I, I can't think of another issue where we have spent quite this much time making sure that we were looking at every possible option and giving the community so much opportunity to give input, to, to truly, really give this the consideration that it needed. And so I thank Madam Mayor for, for doing that for our community. That's all I have to say.
Right, Clerk, we call the roll?
Willetts.
No.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
No.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Four in favor, two opposed, motion carries. Well, thank you, everybody. Do we have an executive session? Okay, we do not have an executive session. So with that, we are done with the city council meeting, but, but we are not adjourning. Of course, everybody here can leave if you need to. Except for all of our department heads, of course. And we're going to move back into the budget conversation. And with that, we'll pull up chiefly, you'll head to the dais one more time to now, after having covered the impact of last year, and the look ahead for 23. And thanks, everybody who joined us for our new meeting. Oh, yeah, and we'll get the slides back up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'll pick up where I left off and talk about fiscal year 23's requests and impacts. I had mentioned before, the generational retirement and personnel challenges and opportunities faced ahead. We have been able to reallocate some funds towards deliberate marketing and recruitment strategy, but we recognize that there'll be an ongoing cost. Part of that challenge comes from the resources inside the department. And as our HR director mentioned earlier, the challenges with the staff and HR, we recognize with the substantial onboarding of personnel that will be required over the next half decade, that the resources, the resources to do that really are best served by reaching for outside assistance and professional services to assist us in that recruitment effort. We're also looking at police services and accessibilities. In short, a facility study, but the reason we're referring to it as accessibility is we're really being mindful of future growth in the community as well as accessibility. We don't want to just simply build facilities so that we have physical office space and housing for officers, but we want to make sure that we're designing them in locations and with a design that invites the community to interact, that serves the community well, that reduces response times and keeps us connected with the community. In fiscal year 22, there was a budget to provide replacements for portable radios, like the kind that we all wear. There is a need to do radio replacement in our vehicles. Part of it is a technological requirement, so there is an ask for that. It also ensures that we have the ability to encrypt our radio channels when necessary for for our police vehicles. And obviously, because they operate in the same space as our portable radios, if part of that system can't, the entire system can't, we need to be able to do that for an officer, safety and community, safety standpoint in certain situations. We're looking at traffic technology for efficiency and accuracy, particularly electronic sites. And so if this makes sense a little bit, if a, if somebody not assigned to the traffic unit in the police department were to issue a traffic citation or traffic warning, they still write, much like probably many of us remember from grade school or junior high, the carbon copy forms. That's literally how they write citations. We're looking at the ability to expand electronic citations and warnings so that there's greater efficiency, greater ability to go out and address what is a top priority and concern and do education enforcement in a more efficient manner as appropriate and needed by the community. We're also looking for enhancements to our emergency response equipment. And to clarify what we mean by that specifically, we're looking at adding what's known as a small platform robot and scanner to our explosive ordinance disposal team. It's an unfortunate technological need for a city of our size. Our equipment is aging out. We need the ability to send a remote device and equipment towards a suspected device without having to jeopardize our trained personnel and have them manually go down and examine it. We're also looking at acquiring what's known as a long-range acoustical device, which would essentially allow us, allow us to do what you might refer to as loud hail in emergency situations. So imagine the need for us to help fire, do evacuations during a brush fire at that urban boundary and to be able to make sure that people were hearing inside the homes. If they're maybe away from their phones and didn't hear a phone notification or the ability to notify our hail personnel during a flood or some other type of emergency. We're also flagging for you to consider that as we do the staffing study, we are being very mindful to have an eye towards span of control and supervisory capacity and capability to ensure that we're, we're actually out there with our supervisors, supervising officers or sergeants and whoever at the various appropriate levels that the supervision is within their span of control so that we're having clear guidance, clear message, clear leadership as necessary. And that we're looking at rightsizing the department in that area. And we suspect that there may be conversations with council relating span of control in the future. And with that, I would stand for any questions that you may have.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. So I know you've been really good about trying to reach out to the community. And please correct me if I, if you've shared this with us before and I've forgotten. Have we, have we done a survey similar to what I asked about HR? Have we done a survey to see what the community responses to BPD, what their perception is of our police department?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, part of that, I mentioned earlier that Lieutenant Quackenbush had done the research. Part of that is tied directly into that their perception of the department, their perception of procedural justice and satisfaction that they receive from the department or absence thereof. To gauge that, we have not launched a different specific study, but a lot of that information is captured in the data set that we have there.
Great. Just to follow up, Madam Mayor, in regards to the body video, do we, is there a standard operating procedure or policy about activating or deactivating those body cameras?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, there is a standard procedure, but as I've mentioned before, we're going through an overhaul of all of our policies. We're looking specifically at on-body video and bringing that more into alignment would be an industry standard or a national best practice in areas where we may not be at that level now.
And just one more, Madam Mayor, in regards to the civil and human rights training, is that optional for folks or is that mandatory for everyone at BPD?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, that is mandatory for everybody. That is the core foundation of our leadership training program, the development of all our personnel.
And that is the online program through the Wasserman Center? Is that the one that you were referring to? Is there, or is that part of a larger program?
That is part of a larger program. That is the initial component to orient the conversations.
And so it is documented that someone has completed that process?
Yes, Councilmember.
Great. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, Chief, just a quick question about the supervisor span of control. I assume the issue is that there are areas where the span is too great and that's what we need to fix. But can you just elaborate a little bit on what we're hoping to approve on?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Agent, in many cases, it's a complex equation about span of control when you look at types of tasks, remote work locations. So while you may be able to have a larger span of control, say for a sergeant or first-line sworn supervisors in an investigative unit where they're largely housed in a much more traditional office-type setting for the majority of their time, that same span of control would be inappropriate for, say, a supervisor in a patrol setting where we've got all these geo-dislocated officers that are working various different areas and may need a supervisor to respond. My humble assessment, based on my professional experience, is that in many areas in the department where asking for span and control, the task saturates our supervisors and is not optimal for what the city desires.
Got it. And the conversation we'll be having later is how to adjust that either with additional personnel or moving personnel or something along those lines?
That would be correct, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. So much of what we've heard from you today is operational, which is as it should be. We want to make sure that what we've got, the service that we're providing is as good as it can be. My question has to do with, given all the growth, given all the change, given the migration that we're seeing to places like Idaho, is there anything on your radar that we need to be aware of that might change the things that we might need to be, be looking for in policing? Change the way that you're doing policing? Anything that we could be more proactive on than we're not being given what you might see coming based on all that growth and that change in migration patterns?
Madam Mayor, Council President Clay, I think the simple answer is it's less, it's less a question of what we might need to do in reassuring that we're doing what we do well now. I've mentioned before to council, our heavy investment towards community policing. We could make what is frankly the mistake that many other police departments do in many other cities as they grow and not continue that commitment and ask patrol resources to simply take that workload. As we hit that, that tipping point where we start to see exponential demand in service, that discretionary time they need to be able to engage in that work would diminish. And ultimately, in most cities, when you look at the historical information out there, those are the critical watershed moments where perceived trust and legitimacy of the department begins to diminish. I think we're in a very strong position here in the city. We need to be mindful to make sure that we're committing to that work again, as the city continues to grow and evolve into the city of the future.
Madam Mayor. Chief, thank you. I have, I have two questions. One is about, when we talk about calls that come in, and I've had this, excuse me, got a front of my throat.
I'm having the same, the same thing.
Need a drink break? There we go. All right. Okay. So I have, I have two questions. One is about calls that come in, and I've had this same conversation with FIRE about the mental health calls that come. And I think we're in a crisis in this country when it comes to mental health. I'm wondering if there's anything within your plan that can make sure that we're allocating the right kind of resources to the right need. I know that FIRE does with the same thing. Can you help educate us on that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, I think part of it is examining the types of calls that we're receiving and whether or not there is place for a partnership for some sort of alternative response. If it, in really triaging those calls as they come in to the right resource. So part of that, part of that has to be the partnership that we have with Ada County that runs our dispatch in moving people. If police response or fire response isn't the right resource, what is the partnership that we can form for the right resource? And how can we connect them to it? But we also have to recognize that many people that are in need of mental health services require police services as well. They, and continuing to develop our officers so that they're aware of crisis intervention training, best practices, to continue to develop our behavioral health response team for those non sort of peak moments when an individual may need assistance and intervening at other opportunities would be key. And then partnering with FIRE where there's opportunity for us to look at a call that may come in that we suspect or frequently has a tie to mental health-related issues, but is drawing both our resources. Are there opportunities for us to partner and look at some sort of alternative response model, even if police and FIRE are necessary? I, I hope that answers your question for you.
Yeah, I, I think it's just a continuing conversation. And then one more question. I saw earlier in the slides that you were asking for six individuals. Are those police officers? Are those support? Give me some more detail, please.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, at this time, the present ask is for what we refer to as professional staff in the department. There's not an ask for an increase in sworn membership. And if I can explain that with a little bit more detail, we recognize that, say, a community support specialist is easier to onboard and train than the requirements for a police officer bring up to full speed. But it does have sort of a pressure valve, real immediate effect on the call load that our officers are affecting discretionary time that they have. We also recognize similar benefits to other professional staff positions throughout the department. The present ask is for professional staff so that we can onboard quickly. The reason we're not asking at this time for additional sworn membership is because of the vacancy rate that we're seeing because of generational retirement. We need to essentially close in on some of that gap we have now before asking for more. The analogy I used as I was going over my notes with my wife was this is a little bit like not taking too much on your plate at Thanksgiving dinner so that your relatives don't have enough, the relatives being the other department heads.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Chief, just a question about the traffic technology. And so this is what you were referring to, right, about having the little notepad with the carbon copy for the tickets? Is that correct? And I, I think we chatted about this a couple of years ago. And my question was, with this traffic technology, if it gets updated to a better system, is there a possibility of being able to collect racial and ethnic information in that system? I, I think it wasn't possible before because it wasn't part of the, the, the ticket form.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, part of the challenge is that the standardized state forms, it would be the summons to court, don't capture that data. We would have to implement another layer in our system to be able to capture racial, ethnic data so that we could do a deep dive analysis of that information. Part of the challenge with that is because we work with Ada County Dispatch going live with any system would immediately impact all of our partner agencies as well. And so it's navigating that space as part of the challenge as well.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
And next up, we've got FIRE. Welcome, Chief.
Madam Mayor, Council, good afternoon. I told Chief Lee earlier, I'm so appreciative. Last seven years of doing budget presentations, I've always gone right after lunch. And so I was appreciative that he took that trophy away from me. But I'm not going to take the trophy. I remember, Mayor, you called me the fastest-talking director last year about this time, and I'm not going to give that trophy up yet, so.
And not in the way of like fast talker, bad fast talker, but you actually just speak quickly.
Thank you. Talking about recent investments and impact, maintaining services, station construction. I want to first start with Station 6. I'm going a little bit backwards, but we just reopened that station. And I just want to thank you, council, for your investment in that station. I went and toured it. The construction team did a great job. Much thanks to Steve and Sean and his team for partnering with us on that. But that really focused a lot on, A, longevity, making sure that station is now around for a very long time through that remodel, but also B, firefighter health and safety. One of the things that we added to this station that we're adding to our future station builds is a dedicated turnout room, meaning those turnouts that we wear after fire, they go in a dedicated room, they have their own climate system. What we've known the last five years through studies is even after washing, it's off-gassing carcinogens. And so we really appreciate that investment because that's an investment into our firefighter health and safety. Station 6 is very happy with. Station 5 downtown, the planning and the design is complete. We're planning on demoing and then starting that build process summer. We're very excited about that. Mayor, you alluded to in your State of the City address, some of the upgrades we're going to put into that fire station looking towards the future, going all electric. And so we're going to certainly be building the infrastructure to that. Our fire engine manufacturers are not quite there yet with a very reliable all-electric vehicle, but we know that's coming and it's in the works with every manufacturer out there. So we know that's coming. We appreciate that investment early. It's going to be a great downtown station. I am happy to say we do have a location temporarily over the next 12 months while this is being built. In the downtown, we'll be housing Engine 5 at 12th and Bannock, which is kind of exciting. The truck company will be at Station 18 on Chinon Boulevard. But we're still going to have great coverage downtown and providing great service continually to the downtown core during this build. And then Station 13 land purchase is complete. As you know, we have a sign in the ground. We're very excited about that. And our initial planning and floor plan is underway. We'll go through that process and then break ground on that in the summer, hopefully early summer of 2023. Maintaining service, we have some vehicle replacements. And as you know, our apparatus are not cheap. And so we appreciate that investment, make sure our firefighters are, are safe as well with the equipment they have. We did have a hazmat trailer replacement. We, we added an e-motorcycle at, at a Station 1. That's for foothills rescue. We greatly appreciate that. That, that was heavily used. And then two additional brush trucks. And those two additional brush trucks were cost-neutral to the, to the general fund. Those were from revenues we gained through deployments we had had in the past. We were able to increase our wildland capabilities through being revenue neutral. And then maintaining service personnel, we just graduated 17 recruits. And Councilwoman Sanchez, thank you for your comments. They're very well received, very much appreciated by the firefighters in attendance. I was, I was sorry to miss that. I had a prior engagement. We're excited to have these 17 on the line. Unfortunately, with early retirements, we're at about 134% retirement rate right now. Those 17 didn't even get us square again. We're still down one. And so we're going to continue to work on that. But certainly having those 17 on the line, we're excited about. They're going now through their next phase of training, which is that field training time with a captain, and, and then we'll get them through their probationary year. So very excited to have those 17 on. Looking forward, we have really two focus areas. One is maintaining service. We want to make sure we are maintaining service through FY '23. That includes the Station 5 downtown rebuild. Also, self-contained breathing apparatus are our SCBA replacements. You've probably heard about this before. Those are end-of-life. It's a, it's a large cost to replace. We're in our third and final year of applying for a federal grant. It's called the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. We're excited and we're hopeful that that's going to go through. But if not, we've worked with budget to make sure we have funding available to get those life safety components replaced. On the EMS training side, we're asking to add an EMS training captain. And that is really to meet state licensing requirements. We have one training captain focused on EMS with several employees, as you can imagine. And so trying to maintain that requirement through the state requires people to do. On the public education duty alignment, we have had a captain inspector that for the last several years has been doing pub ed. This was a previous decision made. Quite honestly, our inspections now are falling behind because of the growth in our city. And so we're pulling that individual, that captain, back into inspections. And what we're asking for is a civilian position to manage our public education outreach and to really build that program. We're excited about that. And then our wildland annual activity, working with budget, we have never had a budget assigned to our wildland activity before. What we're asking for is to assign a budget and then that stays cost-neutral throughout the year as we deploy. So we will only spend what we deploy and then get reimbursed for. And then enhancing service, again, Station 13, really excited about this. I know that the citizens in that northwest corner are appreciative of the service. That station is going to house not only a fire engine, but we plan on also housing a brush truck in that station. As you know, the foothills and that response there, we need an immediate response. We're excited to house not only a fire engine, but a brush truck in that station. And then looking ahead as well, additional firefighters in the recruit academy, we can handle 21 firefighters max in a recruit academy. And we want to take advantage of that so that we're not putting on two in a year. That's very costly and time-consuming and very labor-intensive. So we're trying to maximize that recruit academy. And with that, I'd certainly stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I very much enjoyed participating in the most recent graduation. It was wonderful to hear people from all kinds of different backgrounds choosing firefighting as a vocation and choosing to do that here in the city of Boise. I just wanted to also commend you and your staff for working to increase the number of women in firefighting. I understand we have a Ignite Boot Camp later this month for women 18-plus and then in July for 14 to 17-year-olds. And I just want to thank Casey Halmert, one of your firefighters, who has really taken the lead on that. It's, it, it really touches my heart that one of the young women who participated in our Girl Scouts Fire Up teen program back in 2019 is now a firefighter in Nampa. And so it's, it's wonderful to, to see the immediate payoff, relatively immediate payoff for those investments. So just want to thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sanchez. We're looking forward to the June event and the July event. In fact, we have departments across the West are kind of taking a peek at what we're doing to see, see how successful it's going to be and maybe mirror that. So we're excited.
Madam Mayor. Thank you. And it's exciting to hear that Fire Station 5 is designed. I'm looking forward to seeing that come out of the ground and, and then to be followed by 13. One of my questions about the electrification is making sure that at all of those stations, we have a publicly available electric charging spot, I'm assuming. Okay, just wanted to make sure and get that on the record. Also note that at Fire Station 13, we have an operation.
Also note that at Fire Station Thirteen, we have an opportunity to create, um, a future place for VRT buses to charge as well as our own trucks. So I think that's a really great partnership. So, um, my question, uh, is you didn't mention, um, that through the EMS JPA and some changes in legislation this year, we'll likely receive some additional funding. And, um, have you had a chance yet to think about how that's going to be used within our own system?
Madam Mayor, President Clay, great question. As, as you know, as the Board of Access, we're looking forward to presenting that to you. We're working through it right now. Uh, the state still has some work to do. So we got the legislation passed, Council President Claggs alluding to GEMT, Ground Emergency Medical Transports, a federal Medicaid reimbursement program. So for Medicaid transports, it's pennies on the dollar as far as getting reimbursed. This is a federal program to help up that reimbursement rate. Uh, the state had not passed legislation until last year. I, I will say we passed it on the first try and it was almost unanimous in both, both chambers, which is pretty unique last year. But there's still some work the State Department of Health and Welfare has to do to get the annexes and the rules set up. We anticipate that to be done the next couple of months. Initially, we thought the Ada County system, our access system was going to get about $6.7 million roughly. It sounds like it's about 8.2. Collectively, we are talking about what to bring to the board as far as enhancements to the system. And this goes, Councilwoman Willetts, to the conversation we had about mental health and the increase in just service calls. We are seeing in fire about a 32% increase. It's the largest jump in our call volume out of all of the things that we go on. How do we as a system hire additional resources that makes sense to go out and handle some of that non-emergent, uh, call volume, call types? And we can do that with some of this GMT funding. So we're looking at it as a system. I appreciate the cooperation from Ada County Paramedics. Quite honestly, as the ground transport ambulance service, they're entitled to most of that money, but they have chosen to say, let's do it as a system and be better as a whole. So we're looking forward to that. We haven't yet developed the details, but that'll be coming to that board.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, um, thank you, Chief. I too was able to visit, um, the remodeled Stations Six up on the bench. And I saw the chief there where we did talk about publicly available charging stations, um, because of my story about having to stop at Station One on my way home when my car was dying and, um, have them pull out, uh, extension cord to my car so that I could plug it in. Um, it would just would have been so handy to have a little charging station out there like the Discovery Center has and, um, like we have out at the library on Colonnade Stick. So I think that's great. One of the most remarkable things though, and I think this is a testament to our Public Works team and our fire team, is that Station Six has such, I mean, for just a remodel, it has such a humane design that's going to make it so much better for firefighters to work and live there for two days, um, of their week. So I think that that's really remarkable. Um, it's something that like non-firefighters probably wouldn't think about. But it really, I think, is going to make a tremendous difference. So I, I really commend the whole team who worked on that. It's, it's pretty great.
Thank you, Pro Tim.
Madam Mayor. Chief, I think I saw that there were two positions that you were requesting. Could you give us more detail on that?
Yeah, so one position is that, um, uh, training captain for the EMS, EMS training captain. Uh, that'll be in conjunction with our other full-time EMS training captain to provide state required EMS training to our firefighters. And really their focus is on our basic life support firefighters. The advanced life support firefighters is done through our access system, but this is for EMTs, which are the vast majority of our department members. The second position is that civilian public education manager position. We're shifting the current inspector back to inspections and backfilling that with a civilian public education manager.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
And next up, we've got Steve Burgos, it looks like Steve Hubbell is here too. Or maybe you're just watching, okay, with Public Works.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for the time. Uh, wanted to give you a quick overview, our FY22, um, review of, of investments and then we'll move into FY23 and what we're looking to invest in. Before I do that, I just wanted to provide a quick overview of how Public Works is broken out from a fund standpoint. I know this can cause confusion, um, not only amongst, uh, council members, but the public. So we do have, uh, some services within Public Works that are funded from the general fund. You can see them listed here, so our climate action work, uh, the city facilities, that's our facility services and operations. And then Sean and Rob's team on the planning and design and construction of, of, for example, the fire station that was mentioned just previously. And then we also have engineering and stormwater work that are there to support planning and development services. So those are carved out and funded from the general fund. And then, of course, we have our four major enterprise funds that we, that we own and operate in Public Works and provide the service to citizens. And if I were to try to break these out from a kind of an annual spend, about 10% of what you see on the left, uh, is what we spend in the general fund. And about 90% of the Public Works budget on an annual basis goes to the enterprise funds, just to give you a sense for how that breaks out. So I'll start with our Public Works General Fund Investments from last year. So recent, or this year rather, recent investments and impact, uh, we've been able to convert, thanks you to all for the, to you all for the investment of the 100% city streetlights are now LED. So that's 2,200 streetlights that were converted over the past year. It's a huge effort and thanks to staff for doing such a wonderful job. We've added eight new, um, EV sedans and five all-electric trash trucks to the fleets, fleet. And I'll talk about in total what the carbon offsets are associated with all of these initiatives. We were able to get, um, a hundred thousand dollars last year for energy efficiency, efficiency improvements for vulnerable populations. So we were able to retrofit 32 low-income homes that were weatherized in partnership with LADA. And that's going to result in about $300 per year per home for savings for those low-income recipients. We were able to convert three city buildings to all-electric. We're actually still working through those, uh, you can see those buildings listed there. And then you all provided, um, some funding to the geothermal fund. I know it's an enterprise fund, but you chose to provide some additional funding for some projects. All of that added to some additional work where we were able to add five new buildings. And this year we completed a design sprint, which I'll talk about here in a second. So all told, when you see that these, um, these incremental projects, they all add up over time. And so just looking at these projects on the slide, that's about 1,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent that we're going to reduce on the emission side. To put that in perspective, the city government, we emit about 35,000 to 40,000 metric tons a year. So over the next 10 years with these investments, we'll be able to reduce that number by about 10,000 metric tons, tons per year for city government. So while these are small incremental gains, they all add up. And that's part of the approach that we're going to need to getting our arms around reducing our emissions.
Before you move on from this, Steve, um, and it came up when you were talking about the city streetlights, it kind of popped into my mind. It would be interesting to know, and you might be measuring this, what the savings are on maintenance and energy costs with those conversions also. I'm not sure where else that might, I mean, it would probably also apply to electric vehicles, um, and geothermal. So it would be interesting to know, like, this is a great investment in carbon for sure. What does it look like on the financial side for us as well?
So that's one of the, Madam Mayor, Council Pro Tim, that's one of the exciting things about these investments is the, are the financials associated with climate work are starting to kind of, they're going in our favor now. 10 years ago, these things would have been very expensive to do. Now they're starting to become more cost effective. So in the case of the LED streetlights, that's going to lead to about just a financial savings of $60,000 a year on our energy bill. So the, the payback period is going to be within about a 15-year window. Um, so those are becoming just financially smart things to do in addition to better for the environment and climate action, so.
Great, thank you.
And then I'd also just want to recognize my other, uh, fellow directors. Part of what's exciting about this slide is we're starting to operationalize our climate work. And that doesn't happen just in Public Works, it happens across the city. So Chief talking about the all-electric fire trucks, uh, Doug, I know is looking at an all-electric Zamboni at, uh, Ice World, which is exciting. Airport is looking to electrify. There's a lot of great work going across the city. Um, so, so thanks to them for engaging in the work because these incremental gains will add up over time. So moving forward into the general fund, um, while I talk about incremental gains being important, there are some big steps that we want to take. And so what you see on this slide are some of those big steps. And those first three boxes actually are all ARPA funding. I'll spend a little bit of time because I know that was a, a topic that came up earlier. So the ARPA for Clean Energy is where we want to spend money working towards a green tariff with Idaho Power. And our hope is that we're able to negotiate with Idaho Power on a fixed cost for that green energy. So that over time, in the initial years, we'll be paying a little bit of a premium, but at some point it'll turn over where we'll actually be saving money on the backend years of the contract. So again, in one-time investment that leads to long-term savings for operations. We have plans to electrify up to seven additional buildings and we're going through a list and prioritizing those additional buildings, uh, uh, based on things like carbon offset per dollar spent. Or is the building needing a replacement of an old aging, uh, natural gas system that just makes sense to convert it at that point to all-electric? So we'll be back in front of you with a list of the projects that we are going to propose and how we prioritize those projects. The one water approach is going to be the bulk of the ARPA money that we're looking to invest. Um, this is associated with really looking, taking a close look at diversifying our water supply. So you may have heard about certain projects being proposed on the Lower Boise River, for example. There's a couple of storage projects that are being proposed. But we're going to need some funding to, to buy or get access to the water rights associated with those storage projects. So a big chunk of the money that we like, that we're using from ARPA is going to apply to this one wire approach where we look to diversify water supply. That could then be used for, uh, augmentation of winter stream flows that are, can be very low in the Boise River and, river, and will potentially get worse with drought. We potentially could lease some of those water rights to other users and create a revenue stream. So all those are on the table and we'll be back in front of you with some thoughts on how best to do that. And then last but not least, for 23, we are going to consolidate, um, our FSO services for library and parks. They'll be coming over to Public Works. That was an initiative from our priority-based budgeting process. Um, Eric and Chloe came up with that, that approach. We worked it and we'll be able to move forward with that for FY23. And then I'll move on to our, uh, enterprise funds for Water Rental Services, just a high-level overview, our recent investments and impact. Obviously, we had the successful bond election this past November. And then we also, uh, were notified by EPA that we have, uh, been approved for the WIFIA loan. Um, good news came recently, and I think I shared this with Council. We initially thought we were going to get 272 million dollars from the WIFIA program. We've been working with EPA, um, and they are going to give us access to additional funding. So that's going to be up, upwards of close to $400 million through our WIFIA, uh, through the WIFIA program. We completed the Lander Street Phase One upgrade. You can see the picture there on the left, that's our new headwork, headworks building that will be up and running, hopefully, knock on wood, uh, this September, August, September timeframe. That's a huge accomplishment for the staff. So that Phase One project at Lander Street included the, the headworks you see there. It also included a new ultraviolet disinfection facility. And then also some site improvements that included a new entrance off of Veterans Memorial Parkway. So we could take the construction traffic off of Lander Street and away from the neighborhood. That was something that was a big win and they were really excited about. All told, that's a $65.5 million budget. We're going to come in a little under budget and on schedule and we're really excited about that. That's a credit to the staff, they just did an amazing job. And then we also initiated our recycled water program this year. That was something that you gave us direction under the utility plan to pursue recycled water program. We've initiated some of this initial studies, uh, for the recycled water program. We're setting up a pilot test of emerging technologies. We're working with Micron, they have, uh, given us the green light to place the pilot test at their facility and divert some of their wastewater to use as the pilot test for, uh, the treatment technologies. We're really excited over the next two years to partner not with, not only with, uh, not just with Micron, but also with the University of Idaho and Boise State for some research and development. Working with some of the, um, grad students and PhD students, um, on specific, um, technology and, and performance that they're interested in researching. Moving forward for 23, um, happy to report that we were going to request a rate increase of 9.9%. Uh, based on a cost of service study, uh, we're going to be able to reduce that to 7.5% for residential. Um, based on cost of service, we realized we needed a slight shift, um, to commercial and away from residential. And so that's allowing us to have a smaller rate increase for FY23 for residential. And then we're going to continue to fund the 10-year CIP, um, uh, that's, that's coming our way for all of these major improvements. You can see the strategic direction we have, I won't read those to you. Specifically for those four, um, goals that we have, these are the projects that are slated for FY23. Those numbers do not add up to 83, 247, just a heads up, if you're doing the math. I left out a couple of smaller projects that wouldn't fit on the slide, but these are the major projects that we're going to be pursuing. Um, Lander Street Phase Two, and then we're doing some pretty big work out at West Boise. We're going to continue working on the recycled water program. A lot of policy discussion we'll be bringing back to Council, as well as some of the results of the emerging constituent studies. Um, we'll be doing pipeline replacement across the city. Um, we've got some enhanced river investment that we'll be providing updates to you all on, and then the watershed exhibits update. Moving on to our solid waste programs, so that's our recycling compost and trash. Some recent investments and impact, so we were able to expand the compost facility. Uh, Boiseans love their compost. And so we needed to expand the program. We've got about a 95% participation rate, which is unheard of in other cities. Um, so we had to expand the facility, uh, good thing, um, we're excited to do that. We had a pilot test of some emerging plastic reuse technology. You can see the picture there is at, uh, Manitou Park, thanks to Doug and his team for partnering with us. On a bench that is made of, um, it's called Bi-Fusion Bi-Block, so it's our orange energy bag. That's taken, a company is now compressing them into these blocks that can be used for construction. We actually have a small home installed out at, uh, Boise Town Square that's inside, inside the mall, it's just demonstration project. So we partnered with them, interested to see how that shakes out. Uh, don't know just yet where that's going to go, but, um, this is an example of how that product could be used. Uh, we will have the, the fifth or fourth and fifth all-electric trash trucks by the end of FY22. And then we did complete a waste audit to inform our strategic plan. We want to make sure Public Works, we like our data. We want to get some data sets on current programs and how they're performing. So that'll feed into our next strategic plan in FY23, which you see there, um, as one of our, our projects. And then we're also going to ask for a 3% rate increase to cover increasing costs. We've been talking with Republic Services, um, they're seeing significant increases in things like labor, uh, driver costs. So we're going to ask for a 3% rate increase to try to cover some of those costs moving forward. And then last but not least, um, our two smallest funds, the geothermal irrigation funds. Um, this past year, we were excited to, uh, we've got five new buildings that we're going to add to the system. Um, we did complete the geothermal design sprint that was working with, uh, Kyle Patterson in the mayor's office. Uh, a really interesting process, we had representation from across the city. We'll be coming back to you with the results of the design sprint. We were trying to figure out how, how best to innovate within the geothermal system and add customers. What are some of the key issues that we need to be thinking moving forward? Um, and then we had some system replacement projects, you'll see down on Bannock, that's about to kick off. Um, that's a major replacement project between, uh, I think it's 10th, ninth and 10th on Bannock. Um, that'll be a big project that's going to happen in the next, uh, probably month and a half. And then moving forward, we are applying for additional federal funding for the geothermal system. We're hearing about some DOE grants that are out there that we would really like to have access to. In fact, I just got an email from, from Steve and the team, there's a new program from DOE. We're trying to get, get smart on it and figure out if it's something we want to apply for. We just heard about that yesterday. Um, and then we're going to pilot study, um, an irrigation system improvement project. Um, as many of you know, there's irrigation that runs throughout the city and over time, some of those systems have come into disrepair that typically would water, uh, residential lawns. Um, so the result is that a lot of homes are, are using drinking water for irrigation purposes, not our best day. So we're looking at potentially piloting a study to look at what it would take to improve a, uh, specific irrigation system and get those folks back on surface water for irrigation as opposed to drinking water. We'll keep you posted on that, the concepts we're still working through. Um, but we think it's an interesting opportunity, not only for those residents, but we have a park that's on that system that we'd like to also convert over to surface water. So we'll keep you posted there. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Steve. I have a question about the, um, the, the folks who were helped, the 32 low-income homes that were weatherized. That's wonderful, by the way. Do we, do we know what the capacity is, or what is the goal? What's the number of folks that we would, that we are able to reach and would like to reach through that program?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, thanks for the question. There's a huge backlog for folks that, that would like to get their home weatherized. It's a program through LADA, Idaho Power also plays a role. Uh, we were able to invest, I think, I think it was a hundred thousand this past year to get those 32 homes weatherized, but the backlog is significant. I can get that number for you. And part of it is just the capacity to actually have contractors go out and do the work. There's not enough of those. Um, and then there's just the need, right? So I can get information back to you on the numbers and how many we could, um, we could support in the future.
Great, and just a quick follow-up, Madam Mayor. Um, you mentioned also that there are plans to, uh, fix the, uh, pipes. And I'm wondering, um, I know that there, there's been, uh, particular part of Boise, I think it's been up on the, on the bench that have complained about the brown water. Is, is that them, are we, are they on the list?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, that's the, uh, SUE is now Viola Drinking Water System. And we've been working with Viola to try to get those repairs done. Uh, it's our understanding they have those budgeted for and are starting to work that. It's taken a little bit of time, but we're, I think we're finally there. So I can give you an update on that. I'll talk to staff and see what we've heard on the latest, we can give you an update on this.
That would be great, thank you, Steve.
Madam Mayor. Steve, I wasn't able to attend the last two Public Works Commission meetings, um, but I did watch them and I watched the Commission's. Steve, I wasn't able to attend the last two Public Works Commission meetings, but I did watch them and I watched the commission spend hours chewing through all of this information that you've presented in really condensed form here. So I just wanted to thank that commission and your team for, I mean, people, there's so much work that that commission does and so much time and energy that went into this great presentation Steve just gave. So I just wanted to give a big thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Well, thanks for finishing off the streetlights. That was one of the first things I was assigned to when I got elected to council. What are we going to do about updating streetlights? So it's pretty cool. Thank you. Question about the three through seven plastics, the energy bags. I know we're continuing to research. In the meantime, we're continuing to allow the cement makers to use it as fuel. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, which, you know, every time I go somewhere else and I have to throw those away, it just like breaks my heart somehow. So, you know, it may not be the best, but thank you for continuing to figure out how to make that work. With the irrigation systems and the pilot program, I'm happy to hear that there are, I think, continue to be a number of neighborhoods up on the bench that are paying irrigation fees that haven't had access to that water for years and years. And it seems like if we're going to do a pilot, that would be the place. They're the, you know, 50 to 70 year old subdivisions that were originally built on irrigation. The irrigation went away. And or it's, it's underused and I think the water still goes under almost all of those neighborhoods somewhere or somehow. And, you know, we're clearly not beneficially using it. We end up dumping it back in the river. So just really, really excited to hear that you're taking that on. And if you need any, any, you know, intel on those neighborhoods on the bench where I grew up. I may not know anymore, but I still know plenty of people that live up there. So let me know.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council President, thank you for that. And we haven't necessarily landed on a specific lateral system yet. But we'll, I'd love to pick your brain because these, these, these systems are historical and they're, they're, they're pretty challenging to try to identify and try to figure out what are the best fixes. So.
Right. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
And next up, last but not least, we've got Rebecca Huff with the airport.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to start by framing my conversation about the airport budget and our investments this last year and our plans for next year. By talking about growth. And I know that we've talked about growth as a city and as a council many times. And I think what's unique a little bit about the airport is that it's not just the city of Boise growth. It's a regional asset. And so as the entire Treasure Valley region has seen considerable growth, we have seen that reflected in our numbers. Perhaps more keenly than any other city department. So you can see in 2019, we had over 2 million passengers using the Boise Airport. It was a record year for us. Obviously, 20 and 21 were not as robust due to the pandemic. But we are seeing passenger travel continuing to rebound. And we have a high, a low and a medium forecast for passenger employments. We are expecting that passenger travel will continue to grow in 2022. And we have seen that trend to continue. I think it's interesting to note that pre-COVID, our growth rate was 4.2%. And the Treasure Valley and Boise have grown 17% and 6.5% in the last five years. But when you look at the last two years, that's jumped to 7.8% in a two-year timeframe. And so the airport is an enterprise fund, meaning we generate all of our own revenues and pay for all of our own expenses. And that's what the slide is really conveying. One of the key measurements that we use to determine how we are doing from a fiscal perspective, is how much we charge the airlines per enplaned passenger. So that's every passenger who gets on an airplane. And in Boise, most of our passengers will either end or start their trip here. So basically, we could double that for the total passenger numbers. That's an enplaned passenger. And you can see over time, we really have kept our costs relatively static, not increasing. But then as our number of employments have gone up, the cost per employment has gone down again. Because our costs have remained relatively stable while our passenger numbers have increased substantially. And the reason this is important is because it shows that we have capacity to continue to invest in our infrastructure. And we have amongst the lowest rates in cost per enplaned passengers of any of our peer airports. And so this slide here is designed to show, one, that our costs as a unit have gone down over time, but also that we have capacity to increase our spending to accommodate this growth and the passenger needs, and we can reinvest in our facilities. And if you've been out to the airport, you know that we have been busy in the last few years. Things have not stopped. These are some of the major projects that we have undertaken this year. Many of them are multi-year projects. We have a public parking garage, which is currently under construction. That will be complete by next summer, probably late July, early August of 23. Our employee parking garage, which is, construction is happening simultaneously. That will be completed about another six months later. Our rental car garage is in design today and we will be bidding that. And hopefully beginning construction on that next year. We'll talk a little bit more about that in our next slide. Taxiway Sierra is the taxiway that leads over to the SkyWest Maintenance Hanger and the new cargo apron. We're expanding that. And then we're also providing a cargo aircraft parking apron on the south side of the airfield. And then the last item is a low emissions ground support equipment on the west cargo area. That is actually part of a grant program known as the voluntary airport low emissions program. And that's designed to reduce emissions and improve air quality. What that particular equipment does is it allows aircraft to use ground power rather than idling to maintain cabin temperature. And we do that at all of our aircraft parking gates. And this is the last one that we have not done yet. You've talked a fair amount about federal grant funding. The airport actually received three different buckets of federal grants. If you add those together, it comes under just under $43 million. So it's the Corona Response Relief and Supplemental Appropriations Act. That's, we call it CARISA. The COVID Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. That's the CARES Act, the American Rescue Plan Act. And then the last one is the Infrastructure Act. It's been referred to by, as a variety of different titles, but that's an addition. That's 6.8 million over the next five years. Again, we'll be able to use a number of these to build and add infrastructure at the airport.
And Rebecca, just to clarify, it says up there 6.8 a year for five.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. So it's 6.8 times five. And that's a formula. So it's, some of it will be dependent on actual passenger employments, but that's what we're forecasting. It'll be approximately 6.8. And then there'll also be other funding that we can apply for that will be discretionary. So when we look forward to this for 2023, our, probably our largest project is our car rental parking garage. Phase one construction and design at 64 million. You've seen this before, but because of the way we do our budgeting, we can't just carry that forward. So that was a project that we postponed construction on during COVID. It wasn't the right time to do it. So that's moving forward. The other one that I'll call out is our concourse A apron. So that will allow us to build additional aircraft parking apron in space that will be part of our future terminal concourse expansion. That's new, new pavement construction. The other ones, the taxiway Delta and Alpha Three relocation, the whiskey extension, and then the runway improvements are all modifications to existing pavement that's on the airfield. And we're going to fund these projects using a variety of income sources. The grant funding will be used primarily for airfield improvements. That's $21 million. The passenger facility charge or PFC funding, that's the fee that passengers pay on their airline ticket. Again, it goes back into the infrastructure. That will be used primarily to pay for the concourse A apron. That's an expansion. The CFC, which is the customer facility charge funding of about $4 million, that's a fee that passengers pay when they rent a car. That will go to pay for the rental car garage design and construction. And we'll use that money to fund a bond issue for that. And then any other improvements that are not covered with one of those three sources, we'll be paying for those with operating cash flow. And again, bonds, because we'll use bonds as a mechanism to pay for these projects upfront. And then we'll use CFCs and PFCs to fund the bonds over time. And I'm happy to stand for questions.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. I really, I appreciate because we had to hit the, you had to hit the brakes so dramatically at the beginning of COVID on all of these projects that were like, you know, basically queued up and ready to go. It's nice to see that some of those are finally moving again. I'm sure you feel a sense of relief there too. My question is, you used to show us some charts on how we compared to other kind of airports of our size as far, as far as fees for employments. And I'm wondering if that's changed very much since we're now a medium airport. And how, you know, how those comparisons have changed to other airports of our, of our size and classification.
That's information that I'm happy to share. If anything, it's only improved our position because our peer group has changed. Most of the medium hubs, their fee and their cost per enplaned passenger is actually higher than what we would see at the small hub airport. And so I'm happy to get some very detailed information to council. I believe the small hub range is in the $7 range on average. And the medium hub airport range cost per enplaned passenger is in the $8 range per enplaned passenger. And that's the average and we are at $3 and change today. So even if we bring our fees up to $5, $6, $7 per enplaned passenger, which is our expectation moving forward, that we'll need to do to make these improvements. We will still be around the average is our expectation.
Well, I think Rebecca, that that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
It's good to go last. Thank you.
Well, in the next part of our agenda, you see Courtney Washburn coming back up is an opportunity just to summarize what we've been through, but also to make sure that Courtney and team have captured the information for follow up and the kind of interest that council, she, it's the end of the day for me. I've lost my words. You go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I can go ahead. Madam Mayor, members of council, in summary, the staff is excited about the opportunity to bring you a proposed budget that we view as fiscally responsible, values driven, that responds to the economic conditions in our community need. As you've heard a lot about today, a focus on the strategic use of one-time federal funding to create transformational change. And lastly, we propose to make investments to meet today's needs and keep the city well positioned in the future. And during this discussion, I have captured all of your questions and desires for more information. It's a bit lengthier than I anticipated. So I'm just going to review with your permission the items that I think are most relevant to your upcoming budget workshop. And then I will work with council leadership and the mayor to come up with follow up plans for the items that I would consider more in the policy planning and strategy arena. This meeting does a lot for me every year in understanding what you'd like to know more about. And we have an entire year to get some of these items. I will not forget them. I promise. But with that, the notes I have as it relates to the short term budget decision that will be before you are the trends in MNO. Your request for more information about the burden shift associated with property tax, the growth and trends in staffing ads in separate breakouts by general funds and the individual enterprise funds. And a desire for more information on our approach to support and staffing of staff recruitment. There's two staffs in one sentence, but I think I got it. In addition to a request for more trending of the demands within the legal department, which includes resolutions, ordinances, misdemeanors, infractions, and the use of the PRR system. And with that, I will stop to see if I captured all those correctly. And if any additional questions have come to mind since this morning.
Courtney, I think I'll look back through my notes, but I think you got the ones that I had. One thing that I thought of about halfway through, and I thought I would save it for now, is that it would be valuable, I think now more than ever to understand the various grant opportunities that are out there. And the ones that we might think about taking advantage of in different ways and at different times so that we can do that strategically. There's $39 billion in the bipartisan infrastructure law, for instance, that's aimed at local governments. It's the first time they've had that kind of money for that kind of thing. I think in addition, there's other money as a result of some of the continuing COVID funding and other funding such as that, that's, that's more available to local governments and has been in the past. So some of these needs that, that we're already planning to fund, you know, there might be opportunities for, but there might be opportunities to do things that we're thinking we can't do if we could find the funds for them. So I know that we've, I think contracted with, with someone to help us on grant writing. I wonder if we could use a small portion of that contract to develop a list of the various grant opportunities that we might consider going after and after budget is over, maybe go through those and see which ones seem worth pursuing.
Madam Mayor, Council President, yes, we are in a position to do, to do that. In addition, we can provide you with a memo of the grant opportunities outside of ARPA that we're currently submitting proposals for either as the city of Boise or in partnership with Valley Regional Transit, for example.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just a very, very specific question that really requires no discussion, just a quick follow up. Something I meant to ask earlier is whether it's a question for Rebecca and Jamie. Whether the airport and the city attorney's office would be better served by a dedicated legal counsel who is in the airport housed in that team and not the city attorney's office. I don't know. I just keep seeing the turnover there and the difficulties that people have. And so whether the legal services, the airport needs would be better served with a different structure than what we have now, might be something to think about in this budget.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, we are working through that assessment from the consultant provided to the airport about other changes we may or may not want to make as it relates to the airport. And that is a follow up item. And we are working on it and we'll get back to you on how to best provide legal support for the airport, particularly as it grows.
Anything else? Do you have anything else? All right. Well, I think that that's a wrap. So I want to thank everybody for the conversation today. Thank all of our team members who are here and those that tuned in from their desks. But in particular, I want to thank the budget team for getting us to this point. Of course, I'm looking at Eric, so I'm going to start with Eric Bemoria, but Christine Miller, who worked closely with Eric and all of our department heads on this. I'm Travis Black, Mike Shurak, I see back there, Jackie Barrett, Lisa Owens, Jeff Stevenson and Justin Erickson. And this is the team of folks that, you know, work together and work with each department to do all the little things that I can't even imagine doing with all these systems that we have, to make it possible to ensure that funds are accounted for, programs are developed and proposed to be funded and that then importantly, that we and the public can take it in this fashion and get to work with it. So just really appreciate all that. that went in and to that, by that team. And then of course, led by Linda Lowery. So thanks, everybody, today for this great work session. And with that, we've got nothing else before us. So I take a motion to.
Madam Mayor, I move. We adjourn.
Second. We motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.